Hi, welcome. My name is Kevin Solari. I'm a regional editor with Shaw Media, including the Kane County Chronicle, here with our St. Charles reporter, David Pettish. We're talking to some of the candidates for District 303 School Board. This is part one of a part two. Getting up, we're getting ready for the April 1st election. We'll start off with some opening statements and we'll get into questions. You want to go first? Give us, tell us a little bit about yourself.
Sure. I am a St. Charles native, was born right here in St. Charles at the original Delmore. Moved away when I was younger and then came back with my family because it always felt like home. I'm an entrepreneur at heart, but I feel after being, getting my master's degree in physical therapy and rehab medicine, I realized that really my calling was service to others. So I am a co-founder of a nonprofit that is peer-to-peer parent support for kiddos with maladaptive behaviors or mental health or substance abuse struggles. But then also I have a youth coalition for supportive mental health and substance abuse. In addition to that, I'm just finishing up my first term on the board in which I served in numerous committees, four years of safety committee, been the co-chair for that. I'm currently the chair for the DPTO Committee. And also was on the cellphone advisory committee, part of the strategic plan, citizen advisory committee, co-chair, co-chair policy, probably forgetting something else. And then at the division level, I am the Kishawaki Division Illinois Association of School Boards Director-at-Large. And I have two boys, both graduated, one from one high school and one from the other.
Thank you. Heidi, why don't you tell us a little bit about yourself?
Sure. So Heidi Fairgrave, I'm running for reelection to the St. Charles School Board. I'm just finishing up my second term as a board member. And in that capacity, I have participated on several formal committees as well. So we had a community liaison committee at one time, a policy committee, and then business services as well. Also was elected by my board colleagues to serve as a vice president and then a president for three terms. Professionally speaking, I really have my expertise in banking and finance industry primarily. I have been in the corporate environment for all of that time and in corporate leadership for really the majority of my career. So, you know, 25 to 30 years at this point. Personally speaking, I moved here with my family in 2012. I have two daughters. They also have graduated through the D303 system and specifically St. Charles North. So with that, I'll leave it to the next person.
Tony, why don't you tell us a little about yourself and why you're running?
Okay, Tony Bertone Nicholas, otherwise Antonetta Bertone Nicholas, but Tony shorter and easier. I've been a resident of St. Charles with my husband for about 23 years now. My background is ICU nursing in the inner city, up to 32 beds, of which I was also a assistant manager. I've also been a union rep for many years. So I've kind of gotten my feet into a little bit of everything in the medical field. This is definitely my first time into the political arena. And the whole reason why I even thought about wanting to be a part of this is that I spoke with a lot of parents and they were all kind of telling me the same thing about concerns they had with school and what they wanted for their kids and what they were hoping to be able to get. And the concerns were pretty consistent across the board. So when I was asked if I would consider running, I thought this would be the opportunity for me to continue to help. I don't believe in just sitting back if I have the ability to do something. So I began this education into the education arena. And it's, it's been very, very interesting. And I'm hoping that with a fresh set of eyes, it might be something that I could add to and possibly, you know, make whatever changes if necessary for kids because they're my number one concern. Thank you.
Thank you. Kimberly?
Hi, thanks for having us all today. Happy to be here. My name is Kimberly Rich. I have had a 23-year career in education. I have been a teacher and a school principal in both private and public schools. I grew up here in St. Charles, spent some time living in Phoenix, Arizona, but then came back here to St. Charles. I have four children who are in the St. Charles schools or have graduated from. I have, you know, one who's finished college and then my youngest is in seventh grade at Redling. Three boys and one girl. I have been a coach. In addition to my teaching experience, I've coached at the high school level. I have a master's degree in administration, a master's degree in special education, and a doctoral degree in organizational leadership. I have previous experience serving on a school board. I was on a school board in Phoenix, Arizona. I was on the strategic planning committee here in St. Charles, working along with school board members over the course of a year to develop the current strategic plan that we are using. I'm from the east side of St. Charles and I'm, I'm running for the school board because I want to be a part of the team that brings St. Charles to a place where we are the envy of other school districts in the state. I'd love to see us become a mentor school district for other districts and, and really just be on top academically, financially, everything. So that's why I'm here. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We're getting some questions now. Heidi, you'll go first on this one. What is the biggest challenge facing District 303? And in similar vein, but perhaps different answer, what is the biggest concern DO3 families have right now?
I think the, the biggest challenge that D303 is facing right now is not necessarily unique to our school district. And that's related to our budgetary constraints and financial resources. We, in the last year or two, we started a process where we implemented a five-year budget projection. Part of the reason that we did that was so that we could start to have a much more proactive approach to how we were managing the district from a financial standpoint. And we would have the opportunity to partner even more so with our associations, for example, and really be transparent about how our budget is working and where we have constraints. It's also where, how we drove to working within a balanced budget instead of relying on fund balance or reserves to fund some of our initiatives and programs. So I think as a district, we should be very proud of that. We were starting to put tools in place. We also did a deep dive in the last year related to each of our departments, again, in an effort to really hone in on our financial resources and how we're using them and could we be using them better. So we have started putting tools in place. We have levers in place that we could proactively pull. But like I said, you know, resources I think are a constant concern for our district. I think we've done a very good job of managing our resources to date. But like many districts throughout the country and in the state of Illinois, you know, resources I think is our biggest challenge from that standpoint. I think from our D303 families, I think there are a couple of things that are up top of mind for them. One of them, I think, is related to our academic rigor. And do we, do we have the right and appropriate curriculum in place? And are we teaching it in the best way that we can to really have all of our students thrive to the best of their abilities? I think also a challenge that we're seeing more and more so for a lot of reasons relates to discipline, particularly in our elementary schools. And I think that's also a very big concern for our families.
Thank you. Tony, same question. What is the biggest challenge facing District 303? And what is the biggest concern DO3, D303 families have right now?
Well, of course, there's always a multitude of things that, you know, if you have 100 parents, you're going to have 100 different opinions. But the consensus has been for the parents is the proficiency, as our rates are a little bit low. They're lower within the Hispanic and the black population as well. So there's been, that has been, seems to be the most consistent for them. I think with all the resources that we have, perhaps there are some things could be adjusted where there's more, more resources allocated to the kids who are having proficiency issues as opposed to parents telling me that they have to go outside of the school system to get their kids brought up to where they know they can be. So that was, that was my, my first concern. And of course, the one that wanted, that caused me to start running, or at least consider a run for the school board. The other situation has been with seniors in within our area. Their taxes are going up. Other families, of course, their taxes are going up as well. So as they're all struggling to figure out how they're going to afford these changes, we have to take into account that some people are having to move. Families wonder, do we have to move? Seniors, definitely very concerned about moving because they can't afford it. And with everybody asking for increases for their particular programs, the school has to be, I think, a big focus just because of the fact that we have to prepare our kids to become independent adults. And if their proficiency is considered consistently can stay where they're at, we're going to see a generation of kids who cannot do the basic reading and writing and arithmetic. So if you want to look at the most important thing for me, it's, it's the curriculum the kids are having at the moment. As Heidi also said, there's a disciplinary issue. Some parents have talked about a disparity in discipline with the kids. Some favored over others, and I think that needs to be revisited to see what our, our guidelines are for things of that sort and implement a way that everyone understands what is expected. The kids have to understand what's expected of them. And then when they fall outside of those parameters, there's, there's discipline and there's, there's punishments. And we all went to school same way. You know, we knew what the rules were. You step out of line, things happened. And now I see that that's kind of been a very blurred line. So that would probably be my third concern. So the proficiency, the taxes, and the discipline. Thank you.
Kimberly, same question to you. Biggest concern facing DO303 and biggest concern for D303 families?
Sure. I think that the things I have identified throughout D303 that are areas that we can continue to focus on and continue to work on would be academic excellence throughout the district. Hiring and retaining the top employees, that would be, you know, teachers, admin, again, throughout the district. Are we, are we recruiting, hiring and retaining our top employees? And then would be student behavior. I think for families, there's a lot of overlap in there. I think families want to see us continue to be fiscally responsible. I hear families sharing some concerns about safety issues and things that we can continue to improve in that area. College readiness, which would fit in with that academic excellence throughout the district, and then student behavior concerns also.
Okay. Thank you. And Kate, same question?
So I agree with a lot of what was said. One of the things that I think is the most important is a balanced board. And many of us bring our own specialties and our own focus. And for me, while I am very, very budgetary minded, because it weighs heavily on me that it's other people's money. Yes, it's my tax dollars as well to be very fiscally responsible with. But I also know that I'm, I'm allocating everyone else's funding as well. So that really weighs heavily on me. And as Heidi described, we went through a very long, very in-depth process with regards to a five-year projected budget, looking at all the departments. That, to my knowledge, has never been done like this in D303. And it's been a really, really great experience to know where all the dollars are being spent. And it's not just about, when we talk about our academic return on investment, our AROI program, it's not about what is the best bang for our buck. If you look at what we talk about in our meetings, we're talking about what is the program doing? How effective is it? Who are the students that are involved in this particular program? And then what is it costing us? So it's about the students and the performance and program efficacy. And then it's about who are the students involved? And then it's about the cost. So this is wanting to be clear that this is not about penny pinching. We want to be very intentional with our, with our allocations. So it's more about allocating properly and fiscally responsibly than, you know, trying to cut back everywhere. So I wanted to be clear on that. In addition, I think that one of the things that I am focused on is about not just student behaviors, because at the elementary level, nationwide, it's very difficult. It's very problematic. And I don't know what to attribute that to. I can make my own assumptions and what I've read, which is that it potentially has to do with this group of kiddos not having the same socialization due to COVID that were in preschool or lack thereof, just because of restrictions. So it could be that. It also could be an influence of social media. Because certainly when my older children, my oldest is almost 23, he, there wasn't social media when he was an elementary student. And now that's a very common thing. Devices and one-to-one devices are very common. And what I've learned, being on the, these cellphone advisory, participating in that committee work this year, is that the increased influence on how that plays out in the classroom is exponential. So it has, it has an emotional content, component, sorry, component, the mental health component. And then it also has a pretty large impact on efficacy of learning in the classroom. If a child is doing this, they're not paying attention. So when you eliminate this part of it, then you're at least able to focus in more. Getting back to bullying or discipline, we have pretty big limitations when it comes to SB 100 with regards to you can't just have an if-then statement, if a child does, a student does this, then the punishment is that. The law states that that is not a viable way to allocate discipline. So we have to take that into account. However, we review those policies yearly. And I did that while I was, we all do that as a board, as a collective, but I did that when I was on policy and we continue to review that every year. However, I think we really need to refine that based on how, how are things being implemented? Is there a possibility to do a peer review with a restorative justice type of mindset? Is that, and not, while it's not being implemented effectively, that's a different story. So it has to be implemented effectively. But that's, that's a possible way to, to work towards better behaviors in the classroom.
Thank you.
And that's a pretty good tie-in to our next question. So the topic here has to do with the cellphone policies and technology in classrooms. The government, the governor has been a proponent of banning cellphones in classrooms, leading to a wave of policy changes across the state. I know that the D303 is in the middle of kind of figuring theirs out right now. But what is your stance on cellphones in classrooms? Do you agree with the governors wanting to ban them altogether? Or what's your, what's your stance there? And we'll start with Tony on this one.
Totally in favor of the governor's idea of banning cellphones in the classroom. We don't need them, especially in the elementary schools. They do not need them. Most of the time, if they need to find things out, I remember this thing called the library where we'd have to go find the book, look up stuff. I mean, things that they need to do on the computer, they could do once they're home, under their parents' supervision. But when we're in the classroom, we're there to learn. Part of the issues that I've found with some of the kids is they're so intent on their cellphones, they're not listening. They may look like they are, but they're not because they're on their cellphones. I really don't understand, unless it's an emergency situation, why the kids need to have them. Now, I get it, high school, I understand is different. You got to get rides, you have to get to your job or whatever. And yes, there's emergencies, I get it. But I would like to think that somewhere in the school, if there's an emergency, they would be able to get ahold of whoever it is that they need. So I totally am for banning cellphones in school.
Thank you. Kimberly, same question?
Sure. I think that we do need stronger policies about cellphone usage in school. And I have a couple of examples for that. I just want to clarify one thing based on what Antoinette shared, is that I do think cellphones and computers are going to be, you know, two different paths. And so, you know, what I'm saying is specifically to cellphone use. I believe the use of, you know, the Chromebooks that we have within the schools are important. I think they're an important tool for college readiness because that is how students are going to be learning when they get to that level. But speaking specifically to cellphones, I do think that we need policies that are limiting their use during the school day. I would like to propose a policy, and I think this is what the board is currently working on, where students are able to carry backpack or cellphones in their backpacks turned off, not being used, so that before or after school, if they need to use them to contact parents for a ride or because, you know, athletics were canceled that day, that's fine. But that during the school day, the expectation would be that they are turned off and not available, possibly left in lockers. I do think we live in a world, I've, again, as a school administrator, we don't have self, or not cellphones, we don't have payphones. I couldn't think of what they're called. We don't have payphones anymore, right? And so when there's those emergencies, when you have a coach who got sick during the day and practice has been canceled, for example, at one of our junior highs at Thompson or Redling, you've got students who are not able to travel on their own. They don't drive yet. They need to reach out to parents to say track practice was canceled. And we don't have the infrastructure for all of those students to be able to find a phone within the schools to do that. So to have them, if they need them after school or before school, I don't have a problem with. But during the school day, they, they are a distraction and they aren't being used for the right purposes. My own children who are in the schools will text me. I, I know their schedule, right? They're in math class and they'll text me to ask what's for dinner tonight, which is ridiculous. And I don't want that distraction from them, right? They, they get fed every night. It's not an unpredictable situation, right? So focus on your learning, put it away. So I think that a policy that allows for them to carry it, but keep it turned off and out of sight during the day would be wonderful.
Excellent. Kate?
Yes, I can speak directly to this, but let me just preface this by, I am not speaking for the board. We have not finished this policy. Right now, it's in review. I can tell you what we recommended as part of the committee and then it will go to, which it's in administration right now, and they're working on what kind of procedures they will be implementing. And then it will come to the board for a board group decision. So that out of the way, this is what the group decided. And I might not get all of the ins and outs exactly perfectly because I don't have it in front of me. But it looks like that at the elementary level, there will be no devices, meaning wireless, Bluetooth, smart devices of any kind. So that includes earbuds, watches, phones, tablets, not including the Chromebook, like Kim said. However, we also have to take into account what happens when older kiddos bring their home-based laptop instead of their Chromebook. So we got to work out some of those kinks. But for elementary school, it will only be available to them before and after school hours. So absolutely not available in any form, off, away, in a backpack or whatever that looks like for the particular classroom. That's yet to be determined. That's procedure. And that will happen throughout the day. They will have it before and after school. Because kiddos do walk home or they may need to alter their plans based on, like you had said, Kim, a sick coach or something. Same thing for middle school. The fine details have not quite been worked out yet, whether or not it'll be allowed during lunch. But as far as I recall, lunch was something for the middle school that they were not thinking would be necessary. We do actually have infrastructure about pushing the word out about practices, but not necessarily always for clubs. So we may need to lean into that. We have something called the Remind app. And then also coaches use the app 8 to 18 that we might be able to use out to. So we might be able, it's a great idea. We might be able to factor that in. But for high school, right now, the debate, no during learning time at all and definitely not in the bathrooms for any scenario, because bathrooms are not a place for phones. Possibly during passing periods and possibly during lunch and/or study hall, but definitely all outside of learning hours for elementary, middle, and high school that would be able to be utilized. I don't think we specifically specified with regards to our preschool, early childhood programming or our transition program, but I believe that administration was going to work that out. Am I in 100% favor for it? Absolutely. We need to get the cellphones out of the classroom. Like my example before, where you have your head down and you're doing this, you're not able to focus, which then is going to reflect in the scores. So I'll be really interested to see with our implementation this past fall, because we're currently doing this, is, is what do our scores look like? That will be really interesting. I'm hoping that we see an increased set of scores this year and then an even better one next year when we have a uniform and unified response and policy from the board. It's a great question.
Thank you. Heidi, this will go to you. And just a reminder, it's whether you, whether or not you agree with the, the governor's stance on cellphone bans in schools.
You know, I think in its simplest form, I do agree with the governor's stance regarding the cellphone banning in schools. And I, and I say that nuance of the simplest form because I do think it, it needs to be a little bit more surgically applied as we're attempting to do with our cellphone advisory committee for this district. So I think that as the students advance from elementary to middle school to high school, I think that they should have some more responsibility. I am, though, at the high school level, completely supportive of the cellphones being unavailable, whether it's in some type of caddy that they check it into when they come into the classroom or in their backpack, something where it's not, not available, and then they have some additional freedoms after that. And, and the reason I would just note why I think it's even critical to have more responsibility at the high school level is we want these individuals to be college-ready, career-ready, whatever their path is. And when they're in employment, for example, it's really, it's not going to be viewed well to be having, looking at your phone the entire time that you're working. So I think that's part of our responsibility as a school district as well, especially with our high school students, is preparing them where we can in our time that we have with them for some life skills as well. So just to reiterate, yes, I do support in the simplest form Governor Pritzker's view related to cellphones. I think as we apply it to our district, I think it needs to be more nuanced depending on whether it's elementary, middle school, or high school.
Thank you. Thank you. Next question. Kimberly, you'll go first. What one accomplishment would you have to have in this next term to consider to success?
For me, I think the greatest accomplishment would be to be in a position where a school board member from a neighboring district reached out to me to ask my advice or to ask for more information about something that we are doing in D303. So I would love to, again, become that model for our neighboring school districts. I'd love to be in a position where Geneva, Batavia, Elgin are all saying, holy cow, look at what St. Charles is doing. Look at what they have done. We want to learn from them. We would like to see the same results in our district and we want to know how they did it. And so I would love for other people to be reaching out to me to learn more about the wonderful things St. Charles is doing.
Okay, thank you. Kate, same question. What one accomplishment do you need to achieve in the next term to consider to success?
To Kim's point, I actually just fielded one of those calls from 203 in Naperville about our PLTW, which is Project Lead the Way. And the message was, you guys are doing such amazing things with your synergy program. Tell me everything. So I mean, that isn't necessarily, if being a board member, because I had a son that graduated from that program. However, that was, it was an awesome experience. I would personally love to see it in a whole bunch more areas. But what would I know that I was successful? A couple of things. One, knowing that our current superintendent, which helped to hire, really has settled in with making sure all the curriculum is standardized and viable and at every school, in every grade, exactly the same. And that doesn't mean kindergarten is the same as high school, meaning all kindergartens, in all kindergarten classrooms, all of the, any of the same grade level at every single school is the same. Nuances for the way educators apply that curriculum. However, a guaranteed and viable curriculum is, has to be key for us to be able to have viable results. Two other things. One, knowing that the elementary school behaviors have become less intense for our staff and for our classrooms because when there's more intense behaviors in the classroom, there's less learning, active learning being done and less active teaching being able to be accomplished. So we have to manage that. If I could do that, that would be amazing. And then the final thing would be hopefully implementing some sort of, some sort of full cellphone policy and, and being able to bring to fruition the five-year budget that we put together, making sure that we're still on track with all of that would just be amazing to know that this is what we laid out. Here we are. We actually have great projected funding. We have a solid fund balance and knowing that our plans from now, because we know things are changing at the federal level pretty consistently, knowing that we've done it in five years and we're good, that would be amazing.
Heidi, same question?
From my standpoint, I think it would be a significant Um, from my standpoint, I think it would be a significant accomplishment if as a school district. Uh, we were able to fulfill our high school transformation or renewal that we've had some initial conversations about. And that will be a pretty large undertaking. If you think about it, we're really looking to do a white paper exercise. Where we're looking at everything from not just the courses that we offer, but um, the career pathing. How do we provide? Counseling services for high school students and career counseling services in terms of whether they go to college or to a trade. For example, um, how do we um, schedule our classes? Um, do we do a block schedule type approach, which we've actually seen a few of our aspirational districts that we've identified? That they are in the midst of transitioning to that as we speak. Do we have the appropriate start time? Uh, in particular, an end time for our high schools. So that I, I think is going to be a huge undertaking and truly transformational. For our district. The other piece of that that I think dovetails into that very nicely is really. Um, building and seeing a culture where we have um, our department chairs in our high schools. They are leaders in our high schools. They interact intentionally with our middle schools and even down to our elementary schools. And we're really very um, concentrated at looking at our curriculum and what are the building blocks in elementary school? How does that impact middle school and up to high school? So really making sure that we build those connections. Uh, and that we're, we're taking advantage of being a unified school district. That has the ability to communicate, collaborate with elementary, middle school and high school.
Thank you. Uh, and Tony, same question. Uh, what accomplishment would you have to achieve in your term to consider to success?
Well, it's probably twofold with the first part uh, being the proficiency scores to go up. I just, I want the kids to be smart, educated, independent. And to function on their own as an adult in whichever vocation they choose. In order to do that, they have to have maybe, or just to look at the curriculum and see what they're doing. At the same time, the other part of my, um, I suppose my consideration of success. Is how we can help the teachers, because the teachers are, are a lot like the nurses in that. The greatest cross that we had to carry as a nurse was the increasing amount of paperwork that we had to do. Which kept us from doing patient care. And so I apply the same thing to our teachers. That we've got some phenomenal teachers who would love to do even more things with the kids, spend more time with them. But the constraints of, of paperwork and expectations as far as what needs to be filled out for the kids. It really does put a strain on them. And that, that was one of the comments uh, made to me by a couple of the teachers. So I would love to see the kids do better in their proficiency, but also help the teachers so they can do more with the kids. To help them bring that proficiency up.
Okay, thank you. Next question is, um, in ten years, where will you see the most change in the district? And what way will it change? What will that change look like? Um, so this one's gonna start with you, Kate.
Oh, okay. I thought I just started. Okay. Um, so in ten years, what will the district look like and what did it take to get there? Um, wow. Um, in the past, we've been a destination district. I remember when my kiddos were in elementary school, St. Charles was the number one city in Illinois. There was all these banners all over our district about that. I would love to get back to that. Um, one of the scores are always implied. I always want kiddos to achieve. But achievement looks very different from student to student. So it just depends on, on, on what you're expecting and what the student wants. So not every student is going to take fifteen APs and not every student is gonna wanna take autos. So for us, the more pathways, the better, because then they have more options for their career readiness. Whether it's college, whether it's directly into the workforce, however. So if we have more pathways and we're achieving and graduating. And we have happy kiddos with less behavior issues at the elementary. Because in my mind, in ten years, those elementary kiddos are gonna be in high school. So what does that look like? So success in the next few years of decreasing some of those negative classroom behaviors. Is gonna mean success in the high school. So we will have eliminated cell phones. And kiddos are gonna be more actively learning in the classroom. Teachers are gonna be more engaged with the students. Cause they're not focused on behaviors or telling kids to put their, their device away. They're actually doing instruction. So to me, the ultimate success was be, would be becoming a destination district for not just our scores. Not just for our budget efficacy and our safety, but also for our kiddos. Being able to be positive in the classroom and achieving their own goals with less behavior issues. That's what success would mean to me as a, as a community member in ten years.
Thank you. Heidi, to you, same question?
Um, of course, uh, I would echo in part, um, what Kate said in the beginning. I would like uh, St. Charles D three oh three to be considered a destination district, if you will. Not just for families, but also for our staff, uh, our educators, our administrators. I think, um, I think we have an opportunity there and, and uh, we can definitely achieve that though. I think in addition to that, I would like to see even more community partnership. And this really um, speaks to what I talked about earlier related to our high school transformation process. Um, we not only need to and must have college pathways, but we also need to have trade pathways. And there's an opportunity to engage with our businesses in our community, to partner with them and get feedback as to what skills. We might not be teaching today, what skills are young people lacking? And then how do we incorporate that into the curriculum? And then from there, can we build internships with those businesses for these students? And then ultimately, if we do it well, we've created a recruitment pipeline for our small businesses in our community. So that's just one example of, of what I would like to see our district look like ten years from now. And what our community culture looks like as well. Um, of course, I echo, um. You know, we need to really uh, impact and solve as much as we can, the student behavior piece. I think that um, that also has a big influence on our academic performance and rigor. Um, so you know, there's a lot of inputs into that, whether it's uh, latency impacts from COVID. Cell phones, technology, all those types of things. I think we need to intentionally look at all those to get our arms around how we can impact student behavior. And I would like to see a lot of that resolved um, ten years from now. And then I guess finally, I would leave with um. You know, getting, getting back to a, back to basics, if you will, in terms of academics. Uh, that we're really in our elementary, middle school and high school that we're focusing. And, and being impactful on those core areas that we're letting our educators teach. Uh, versus relying um, at, on technology at times for those, for some of those things. We have great educators in our district. They have a lot of expertise and really getting back to, to the basics from that standpoint as well.
Thank you. Tony, same question to you. Um, what will the, where will the district change in ten years and what does that change look like?
Well, I'll tell you, Heidi hit so many phenomenal points that I totally support. We keep thinking success means, you know, what degree have you gotten? How much money are you making? That doesn't matter because it's a matter of are the kids happy? Have they studied enough for what they want to do and have they succeeded? We need doctors, we need lawyers, of course, absolutely. But we also do need the trades. Because who's gonna help us to maintain our life or maintain the things that we have purchased in our life? I wanna see the proficiency scores get to the point where all the kids across the board are being given the opportunity to be taught. Like you said, Heidi, the basics, because right now they're, they're at the bare minimum of being proficient. And not, that's not all the kids, of course, but many of them, many, many, many are just at the borderline of being proficient in the basics of life. They're never gonna succeed. They're gonna come back home and live with their mom and dad. So we need to make sure that they're prepared. And I want the teachers to be able to teach them. We want, I want them to be able to have the time to talk to the kids. Find out what the questions are, work with them without having to worry about what they have to do in order to keep the paperwork going. So teach the kids, let the teachers feel like they're making a real firm impact on them. And let's see in ten years where they are. Are they, are they in the profession that they wanted? Are they happy with it? Um, I mean, we, we could look and, and say all the, the flowery words we want, but it's the numbers are gonna show us. How well we've done to help them. Thank you.
Thank you. Kimberly, same question?
So in ten years, I would love to see us in a place where we are still operating with a five-year financial plan. Where we still have a strategic plan that we're using both of those things together to drive our policy and decision-making. I think it's really important that we have, you know, an umbrella that we're looking to, to help us as we guide the different decisions that we're making. So I'd love to see those things still in place. I would love to see that we are in a place where we have high levels of academic achievement. Across all grade levels so that we know that our students, when they do leave our district, have all the options open to them, right? Regardless of whether or not they want to go to an out-of-state school, whether they want to study out of the country. Whether they want to be studying here locally in a community college, if they want to be a part of the trades. If they, if they just want to take a gap year and read some books and travel, I want them to have all options available to them when they leave us. I'd love us to be in a position where we have effective and efficient collaboration amongst our staff members. And that we're doing that with the top staff members here in the state of Illinois. Again, back to my earlier point. I'd love to see us where we are recruiting and working to retain the very best of the best here within the district. Because I think it's those, those incredible educators who are, you know, who are helping to drive that academic excellence. Um, I would love to see that we have student engagement back on track. So that um, students, I think that as we've all mentioned earlier, is gonna lead to that academic achievement. And you know, will also help with behavior issues and fiscal and academic strength, I think are really gonna be what. We are known for in ten years. Fingers crossed.
Thank you. All right, thank you much. Um, we're now gonna take a chance to, to play teacher for a second. Uh, Heidi, we'll start with you. What grade would you give the current school board's management of District three oh three and why?
Um, that's a great question. I would, uh, I, I would give it a B. Or if, if we're doing on an A, B, um, five-point scale, uh, I would give it a B. Um, and the only reason that I would do that is because I think that uh. There's still some op, there's always opportunity to improve. Uh, we have, and, and if you think about our, our current administration. Which Dr. Gordon uh, leads, he's been here uh, approximately two years, we'll say. Um, at this point and, and a lot has been accomplished in a very short period of time. We've talked a lot on this call already about um, the financial aspect. We did a lot of work into deep dives of, of each of the departments, looking for opportunities to redirect funds. Uh, we came up with a five-year um, projection budgeting process. Um, and I'm sorry about that. It just said my video isn't working, but hopefully you can hear me.
Yes.
Okay, I'm not sure what hap, what's going on there. Um, so we've done a lot of things from that standpoint. Uh, we were confronted uh, with a huge problem, particularly at our elementary school level. Related to student capacity at each of our schools. It was very disjointed. So we actually were very thoughtful about how we approached that. Uh, we interviewed and hired a demographer who gave us projections in terms of population for the next ten years. So we were very thoughtful and strategic about that. Uh, and speaking of strategic, uh, one of the first things that we did. Uh, as a board with our new uh, superintendent and leadership is we developed a strategic plan. Uh, this district has not had a strategic plan, at least in the time that I've been on the board for the last eight years. So in, in a nutshell and summary, I think we still have opportunity to, for improvement. Uh, but I would still say that we've done very well uh, in the tenure with this leadership. Uh, which is why I rated it the B that I had. And there's been a lot accomplished in a very short period of time.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Tony, you're next up. Uh, what grade would you give the current school board's management of the district and why?
Well, like I said before, this is my first foray into the educational field, into the educational arena. Uh, so reading what I have read up to this point and balancing against what I've heard from parents. I would say either a B minus or a C plus.
Okay, do you wanna explain why or?
Well, I mean, like, like I said, just coming into this. And, and you know, not familiar with the, the way things go and not knowing the board or anybody um, like everyone else does. I'm just, I was kind of surprised at where we were uh, with their, with their kids, with the disciplinary problems. I know there are school districts that are in far greater need of uh, of reorganization. And, and from what I understand, St. Charles is, is doing very well compared to the other places. But uh, we shouldn't be the exception. It should be for everybody to have the same opportunities. So if we could make our school district a little better, get our proficiency rates up. Um, we have our, have some of the loads taken up, taken off our, our teachers. Uh, so that we can be the leaders and the ideal role model for other schools, that would be great. But right now, I don't think we're quite at where I think we should be. And like I said, it's my opinion. It's, it's, it's basically just my opinion.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Kimberly, what grade would you give the current school board and why?
Um, I mean, so far, I guess I'm gonna, probably gonna be the, the most generous. Um, I, I think a, a, a B plus. Um, you know, I think that there is, I think there's always room to grow. I think it would be hard to find a, a, a school board that, where there isn't something, right? Some area where, where you couldn't do better. But I think our current board is doing well and that's a big reason that I want to be a part of it. I think they're doing really good things. I think there is more good to be done. Um, and I, I wanna be a part of that group of people who is, who are working together. To, to try to make D three oh three as, as excellent as it can be. I think that there, I think the board is having good conversations. I think the board's um, focus on financial responsibility has been strong. I think that the efforts of the board and the superintendent to put the strategic plan in place is good. I've also really appreciated it, again, being, being a part of that strategic planning process. Something I, I did not see six years ago in the district that I see today is collaboration amongst. All people within our community. And I think that's a huge strength. When we were working on the strategic plan. There were parents in the room, there were educators in the room. I was there as, as an educator. I was working in, in D three oh three at the time. There were members of administration in the room. There were students who were in the room. There, they pulled from all parts of our community. As we were really looking at what do we want the goals to be. And um, even as we were going through different phases then, that information was released to the community. There were surveys that went out. There were open meetings that anyone could attend to learn more and ask questions and their questions were answered. Um, I think the transparency in this, in this district has, has really been wonderful. So I, you know, I've been really impressed with the transparency, with the goal to bring all voices into the table. With the focus on finances and the, the goal to improve academics. So I've, I've been impressed and, and I would really love to be able to be a part of the group that's doing great things.
And uh, Kate, same question?
So when you first said the question, you said the management of D three oh three, but then you changed it to school board. So I, I'm, I'm gonna put those together because really the school board is managing. But then also there's the component of administration managing and Paul Gordon, the Dr. Gordon, the superintendent. So it's kind of a big, it's a big barrel. Um, I'm gonna go with B plus. Because there's always room to grow, always. Um, when I ran the first time before my first term, I was mortified as a taxpayer and a parent and a community member. Someone who had given my time for years in PTO events and worked hard to support our staff and kiddos. That we had no strategic plan. It boggled my mind. So when we were able to get a new superintendent and really kind of say, Dr. Gordon, we need more communication. We need more collaboration. We need more transparency. We need a strategic plan. And here we are. So I, I would love to stay to continue that trajectory because we're not done, which is why it's a B plus. But I, I really think that the board has worked well and made some really tough decisions and worked really hard. It is no fun changing boundaries. Um, and I think a couple of days in a row, we got more than a couple hundred emails. In a day, maybe a couple hundred emails in an hour that we were trying to filter through and to Kim's point. We really read those. We took those into account. We had meeting after meeting after meeting with the public. To try to collaborate. And that's something that I never have seen before in this district. Now, I didn't know everything. Of course, I'm not saying that, but I'm saying as a community member. Watching that happen now as a board member. I'm going to go ahead and say, because I'm part of that process, is that it's a B plus. Because the current group of board members and the prior terms as well, were able to hire a spectacular superintendent. Who we entrusted to lead us in the right way. So I, it's, it's been phenomenal, but we always have room to grow. And I feel like we're in a good trajectory upward, good to great.
Overall, that's a pretty good GPA that you guys have given the uh, the current school board. We're on our last question here and uh, in an effort of time, I know um, Kimberly, you've got some time constraints. So I'm going to start with you, even though it's technically it's Tony's turn. Tony, if you, if you don't mind, I'll, I'll let you go a second here.
Oh, whatever. Don't worry about it.
All right, thank you. Question says, if the football teams of East High School and North High School are playing each other, which team are you rooting for?
Um, this is very easy for me. Undeniably, I am so sorry for, for the other part of town, but it's going to be East very proudly. I um, I graduated from East when it was just the high school. It was not East. My children are at East. I live on the east side. And so my, my son plays football for St. Charles East. So um, I'd have a very hard night at home if I was cheering for North for many reasons. So. That is the easiest question you've asked all day. I love that one. With pride, I am a saint.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Tony, same question.
Well, since I'm very close to uh, St. Charles North, I'm going to go with them because they're too close to my house.
Excellent. Uh, Kate?
Well, I'm going to make it more complicated and say that at uh, I had one graduate from East. I had one graduate from North. So I'm a split decision and I'm not just a split decision because I've had a child graduate from both. I'm a split decision because when you are a board member, I might get a little emotional because it's kind of a big deal to me. And you're looking out at these graduates. I feel like I have 500 children walking across those state, that stage. And I am so proud of them. Um, I got really lucky and because I had a student graduate from each school, I got a hat with the combined logos. And I really feel that. I wear it to the North and East games when we go for the kickoff on. And I wear it with an enormous amount of pride because I feel a protective. A protective intention around these kiddos and that they're just, um, I love them both. But to Kim's point, my family, my oldest brother was in the first graduating class of St. Charles High School in its current location. And once a saint, always a saint.
Heidi, same question.
Yeah, so um, I have two daughters that graduated from North. I live down the street um, from North High School. So you know, in in the back of my mind, I would, I would be rooting for North, but I have to say really and truly. I just want them both to have the best game they've had. And so whichever team wins, wins. And uh, you know, our board uh, and also all the boards in Illinois are intended to be uh, non partisan boards. And I like to think that our board colleagues really try to uh, apply that to football as well, so.
Unfair, but fine.
That's a good answer.
It's okay.
I mean, I'm going to, but yeah, in five years, it'll all look different. All look different.
All right. I want to, I want to thank you all for coming. Um, and our, well over on time. I appreciate your patience as we set this up and. Appreciate your answers and your time.
Thanks for having us. Yeah, thanks for having us. Sorry about all the tech. Appreciate you guys.
Bye bye.
Being patient.
Thank you.